Running against it?
Hey, everybody. We had some technical difficulties. Thank you for being patient. Welcome to the Select Board meeting on Thursday, July, uh, sorry, June 6th, 2024. Uh, we're gonna start, we're gonna call a roll. We have Alec via Zoom. We only have him briefly at least, right? I'm gonna assume he said yes.
Tell me he's muted.
You're muted, Alec.
Okay, can I have a question?
Yeah. All right, thank you for Zooming in. We have Denise, Kenan, Roger, and myself. Uh, so we have a full, full board here. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which sustains the nations under God, in this bill of rights and justice.
Okay, so because we only have Alec for, for not too long here, uh, we're gonna skip to new business and handle this first, um, to discuss, uh, end our vote on the town special election. So, um, I put something out there on Facebook just, just, um, kind of briefly. I want to make sure everybody knew that we, we didn't, um, we didn't convene after the, the town meeting specifically because I knew there was potentially some impacts on a vote, potentially with the fire department, and I want to make sure that that came in and we talked about that first. Uh, it's not something I put on Facebook. I wanted to make sure everybody knew that that was one of the main reasons we kind of held off on this. Um, also, had we done it that night, the weekend, thirty-five days out would have been fourth of July weekend, so we didn't miss any time anyways. So, depending how the scheduling goes tonight, we're still gonna probably schedule it for the same time. So, does anybody have any? Go ahead.
I apologize for that, Nellie, but is it a potential impact of a vote, a five-part we're talking about?
Yeah, it's in the packet about, that's what I referenced before the meeting.
Okay.
Make sure you had that.
Oh, okay, the, the letter you showed.
Yep. Okay, so does anyone have any thoughts on the special town election date? I mean, I have a date. I think it'd be perfect. Um, oh, and, and the fact that I don't think anybody here was gonna not vote for a date for the election, so, um, kinda silly to think otherwise, but.
Uh, yeah, Mr. Chair, um, the only thing that I'm wondering about and would be interested in everyone's thoughts on it is, um, having a vote on a weekend in the summertime, and if that is something we should, um, you know, be considering. I, I, I don't know enough about elections to know. Um, you know, I just think that our goal should always be to try to have as many people voting as possible. Um, and so, um, you know, just thinking out loud, people leave for weekends in the summertime, they go down the Cape, they, they do stuff, um, you know, would it make sense to, you know, think about doing it on a Tuesday or something like that? So, anyway, just that's, that was my, one of my thoughts on it.
No, I, I, actually, it's important as well, and, and, you know, for the most part, I mean, for me and, and the people I know, we're all working anyways, so Saturday's probably the easier day. Um, but also, we're gonna have absentee balloting, so that should help, uh, quite a bit. And I think, personally, I think we'd get more people on a Saturday, even during the summer, um, especially, you know, if we're gonna do it, it's gonna be thirty-five days out, so, let's say it's July thirteenth, um, we have plenty of time to let people know. They can go to Town Hall beforehand and do an absentee ballot.
Yeah.
But I do, but I do take your point, yeah?
Yeah, I just thought, I don't really know enough to take a strong position on either one. Um, the other, so, are we gonna do, so, um, so if, if we did do it on a Saturday and people were gonna be aware they could do absentee, are we also gonna do early voting? Is that something like we had talked about, or?
They, they could do absentee, or they can just go into the town clerk's office and pick up a ballot and vote.
And go right there, so they can vote anytime after we add the ballots, basically.
Pretty much.
Okay, okay. I mean, that, I think that makes it less of a concern than, you know.
And how early before the date we pick would, would ballots be available, do you know, Mike?
How, somewhat?
How early?
Um, I'm not sure how long it'll take, uh.
Okay.
I think Lucia said before it would take at least two weeks to get ballots.
Okay.
So, we would have two weeks, so it would be.
Roughly the week of the, end of the week instead.
So, two and a half weeks or so before, um, the actual ballot. I mean, that's, that's if we do it on the thirteenth of July. I mean, you know, if we set it for further out, then there'd be more lead times to do early ballots, but I, I, I mean, I think, from what I got from the town, I think they want it now, and.
Yeah, I'm sure with the thirteenth, once we have the early voting, it should vote in as soon as possible.
I don't think that we're not gonna have any scheduled early voting. It's gonna be anybody to go in when they want and pick up a.
Absentee, yeah.
Correct. You have to go in for early voting anyway, so.
Right, well, it's just a, it is an expense to set up early voting. To have, if you, if you set early voting, then they have to set up a room, they have to have a campus there and all that.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, oh, yes, go ahead, Lauren.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I just wanted to remind people that there's two types of early voting. One type is basically reason-free absentee voting, and that, that's called early voting by mail. And then there's also the option to have early voting in person. Um, you have to opt in to early voting in person, and you have to opt out of early voting by mail. Um, so, early voting by mail, which is, um, essentially, uh, reason-free voting, uh, reason-free absentee voting would automatically apply for that special election regardless, unless the board were to get a specific request to opt out and the board acted on that.
Okay.
That, which is to say, Mr. Chair, there's additional options for voters who might, um, want to vote, uh, early. They can do that both by this early voting by mail or by absentee, so.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Lauren. Alec, do you have anything to add?
I don't. I think all the options are there for everybody. Uh, I think July thirteenth is a good date, so, uh, all the options for early voting are available, correct?
Yeah, I think the difference would be, um, with the, the early voting by mail, we would have to, and Lauren, please correct me if I'm wrong, we would have to send mailers out to everybody.
I think we already signed, got them out.
So, early voting by mail, um, anybody who wants to can, applying to the town clerk to, to vote early by mail. It doesn't have to be on a particular form. There were, however, uh, application, I'm sorry, applications sent out to all voters by the Secretary of the Commonwealth, uh, earlier this year, um, but in twenty twenty, uh, three, and those allowed, uh, voters to check off that they like early, uh, early ballot for all elections. So, it did go out. There should be people, I think I missed two, uh, that did ask for ballots for all elections, but that is still available to any voter who wants to vote early by, by filing that application with the clerk.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Lauren.
I'll just say, uh, the town clerk did say, if, if that was the case, she'd have to send out four thousand ballots, so she was asking, she wanted the select board to vote opt out of early voting. I don't know if that's a possibility.
Well, because of the timeframe, too. I mean, I'm thinking, you're sending the ballots out and returning. If we're doing it within thirty-five days, it's.
I would not be supportive of that in the summertime, everyone being on vacation. Happy to volunteer some time, which means some extra hands, but, uh, would not be supportive of opting out of early voting.
Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Were you, Lauren, is that, is that an option?
Um, I'm going, I'm checking right now to, at the statute. I think there, it was a forty-five A in advance requirement, but I wanna double-check before I definitively answer that, so just give me one second, please.
All right, so while we wait, do we have any good jokes, or?
Mr. Chair, do we wanna just talk about the, let him talk about the language?
Yes, we got, we got the potential language, um, at least for this, uh, in, in our packet here. Uh, I, I don't, personally, I don't think it's too confusing. I think it's fairly straightforward. It's a yes or no for A and B.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Uh, Mr. Murphy.
The only thing I, I still am unclear about is why the higher amount wins if it passes with a lower vote count win than the four million. I still don't understand that.
I'm gonna put my lawyer hat on and say that, that is, that is a, that's a Massachusetts law.
Right.
That if, as long as they both pass, so, so say the four million passes by a thousand votes, six million passes by one vote, then it goes to the six million, because they both passed and the higher total passes.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm just concerned about peo- people, I, I understand that the wording is in here, that if somebody just votes for the four million and doesn't vote for the six and a half million, and the four million wins by more, they might not understand why.
Yeah.
It means I've got to educate the public, what, what that means.
Yeah, it's a tricky one, and I'll take the blame for that, because I motioned for both of these on here way back when, so.
Can we, like, underline it, or, or bold it, or?
And it says, I mean, it, it says there's separate questions, so, I mean, it's, it's pretty straightforward.
I mean, if you read it, it's right there, right?
Well, that's the key, you gotta read it first.
Put it on all caps.
It's in bold, they're right here. Um, yeah, no, I think.
But, you can just do everything we can do to educate the public, too, about.
I think that's, it allows whatever community.
There was thought about having the one percent budget in here, too, and, and thank God that's on here.
Yeah.
So, we just have those two.
I mean, Mr. Chair, if we don't, you know, we could have, uh, the town clerk put it out on social media, but we can do our part to put it out and try to get it out on social media. We could try to just get it in as many places as possible so that people understand it, but, you know.
You said you don't have to pick one, you can, you can pick both, you can.
Yeah, I don't, I don't wanna be callous, but, you know, read the ballot, you know, before you vote, you know? And we still have a personal responsibility there to read the ballot and understand.
We still have.
Careful. I got attacked for saying that. All right.
I was gonna say, we still have town cable, too, we can put it on that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And once we have the ballot, we can put the simple ballot out, we can say.
But, yeah, I think it's pretty straightforward.
All right, Lauren, did we give you enough time, or?
Of course, this is like the longest statute in history. Uh, I, I'm gonna take another minute, um, but I do want to say that certainly the instructions to voters, and you guys don't have to vote on that, but we can look at them and, and emphasize, uh, even more, um, specifically that the higher one will pass. And, uh, I heard a lawyer hat was, uh, was being worn, and if that is the case, that the law specifically says that. So, um, you know, we can't, and I know that there's some confusion about that, um, but, uh, you know, if, if voters are vehemently opposed to the, to the six million, and they vote no on that, if there are enough of them, then that wouldn't pass. So, um, you know, I think there, it is still, and the voters still have the choice as to which, uh, which question they want to endorse, um, but they are separate questions, and they can each be voted or each not be voted. Um, and, okay, I'm, I'm gonna now retreat to my corner and talk quietly to the rest.
All right. So, excuse me, I'm trying to get through this hallway. Um, so, part of our discussion for the special town election actually includes the fire department, and we have a chief sitting here if he wants to, open. Give us an example as to another reason why I held off this vote until tonight.
Good evening, it's for, uh, let's be on the agenda tonight. So, with me is Deputy Wilson, who you've probably met before, and, uh, by credit, who's the president, uh, by credit union, so. Um, so, we're here, we're here, um, this evening just to ask the board to consider putting revocation of civil service on the ballot again in the special, um, town election that's, uh, that's coming up. So, initially, we were planning on waiting like a year or so, the next spring, to try to request that, as, you know, feel, uh, not that long ago. Um, but after hearing the feedback from some of the voters, um, in addition to the situation that we're in with that promotional exam, we're required to do one this year, and if, um, if we wait till the spring, that'll be just about the time for the civil service, uh, promotional exam would be coming up. So, let's say we waited till the spring, and, uh, the revocation passed, then we would have a pending civil service exam, where the results either just come out, or will be just coming out, and then they may be invalid after that happens, depending on how we all work that. So, uh, from a timing perspective, if we could do that, and if it would have passed, it would help out, uh, Tom and, uh, Hugh, so, um, you know, I, I think that, originally, it failed for a few, few reasons. Um, I think one was that people found the wording on the ballot somewhat confusing from some of the feedback that we got. Um, so, all these issues we'll try to, uh, address, to maybe clarify for people on the ballot to the extent that we can. It's just like Lauren said, there, there's requirements to what you can actually put on the ballot. We're not allowed to put a lengthy explanation or any of that sort of thing. We're not allowed to put any literature in the polls or have me sit there and answer questions for people or anything like that, unfortunately. I'd be happy to do it if that was the case. Uh, people are always welcome to call me if I come out of the station, that's, that's funny. Um, I don't, I think we could have probably done a better job informing, uh, the voters. We did put stuff on our website, in on the town's website. Uh, it was pretty good information, pretty comprehensive. Um, I think it should have been put out a lot sooner, so we'll address that issue this time. Uh, in addition to that, I'm myself, town manager, and probably us if possible, um, we'd like to do an informational session, if you have capable access or something like that, try to get the word out for people, and maybe replay that and, and so forth. And I think, uh, lastly, I think one of the other things that was an issue for us was there was some, a lot of misinformation, from what I understand, that was out on, on social media, right? And, uh, in respect of, uh, increased tier time, I'm not gonna get into all, all those things, but we can certainly address that in that informational session that we do, as long as they, they want to work with us on that. So, like, for example, one of the things that had come up was, uh, I think somebody said that, that they recommend people vote no on it, because we have to negotiate that, uh, with the union, when in fact, that was absolutely negotiated a hundred percent with the union during their last contract negotiation. Uh, following that, uh, the union had a four-person committee, uh, so that, those four-person committee from the union, in addition to myself and Deputy Wilson, um, worked diligently, became a, a comprehensive eighteen-page memorandum of agreement that addressed all of the areas that were previously, that were previously covered, uh, by civil service, so like hiring, promotion, discipline, layoffs, and, uh, and so on and so forth. Collectively, I think we had probably about four hundred hours into that, between doing research and analyzing and trying to, you know, come up with the best process. And, uh, one of the real benefits to that was all that whole process, specifically the promotional process, uh, was all really honed in to be specific just to our department. So, for example, if you take a civil service exam, everybody in the state is taking that, so, the same civil service exam, whether you work for, for a huge city or, or a very small town, anywhere in between, um, they're all taking the same exam. But, so, uh, there can be questions about refinery fires and stuff like that on there, for example, that are probably, they're all going to us, right? Um, so, a lot kind of drawn on, that's, that's kind of what we're requesting. Uh, we'll more than happy to answer any questions, uh, if we have any, any of us up here, so.
Very excellent. Anybody have questions?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Murphy.
Just wanna make you hear from the union rep, and just make sure that, I'd like to hear from them, that they're on board with the whole.
Sure, yeah.
So, what I will say is, our union, the fire union, two, six, seven, eight, the fire union, is in favor of it. We negotiated, so two, six, seven, eight, union was allowed to negotiate it. We were able to negotiate it, and so that's what I'm gonna speak on, is the fire department.
Excellent, okay.
Yep.
Um, yes, Mr. Chair, so there's, looks like there's two ballot things in our.
Yes.
I've got three.
So, we have our attorney on, so.
She's not on yet.
One of the, one of the things that, as Sean mentioned, we thought that, um, people were confused, that they didn't know what the questions meant. And, we're not, we, we were hoping that we could put language on the bottom, not saying one, one way or the other, but just stating that, um, a yes vote would remove the fire department from civil service and provide local control over the recruitment and promotion of personnel, current, and let people know that current members of the fire department will remain covered by civil service statute in their current rank until they're promoted. And that if, um, it's a no vote, it would result in no change to the civil service status of the fire department, and recruitment and promotion of personnel would remain under state regulation and control. We're hoping that if we could put language like that on the ballot, it might help out. Um, I know we, Sprigwater recently put language on their ballot, but Lauren, I'm not sure we're allowed to do it. Lauren, that, we'll have to weigh in.
Well, thank you. Uh, so, typically, explanatory language of any kind is not allowed. Um, I am trying to look at the specimen ballot. I know you had civil service questions on the annual town election ballot. Is that rapid?
Yeah, yeah, we did.
Yeah.
But it was just, it's just yes or no, it wasn't.
Yeah, so it didn't have explanations, and, and that is typically, um, the way that that would work. Um, my, you know, my, my recommendation in terms of explaining to voters would come, instead of directly on the ballot, it would have to come from information sessions. Uh, the town can post the explanation, um, the, uh, on the website, and can make it available to voters who ask for it. Um, we're not allowed to do direct mailings to voters or to kind of inundate them with uneducated explanations, but we can make them available to any voter that wants it by posting it. Um, and, again, I would encourage, uh, if there's questions about what it means, the, um, the fire chief certainly has the ability to speak to that and to, and to prepare explanatory materials. Um, but it, it is correct that we can't kind of take them with us into the polling place. Um, so, that, I, I'm certainly willing to see, you know, whether there's anything, um, that we could do to argue that a summary of some sort would be permitted, and if what the board wants to do tonight is vote to place a question on the ballot, um, you know, maybe the vote could say, with such summaries, maybe, um, allowed by law, because the actual summary language is supposed to be, um, drafted by council anyway, so, um, you know, we would have a little more time than to come up with a, a strategy.
Okay. So, that makes sense. Uh, I know we wanna try to get the ballot perfected tonight, so Lucy can order them soon, so. I'm okay with it. Alec, Alec, um, did anybody else have anything? Alec, did you have anything to add?
No, I don't.
All right, all right, thank you, guys.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Sorry, Chief, one more quick question.
Sure.
Sorry, um, this, this question already passed at town meeting, correct?
Correct.
October, um, exactly.
Twenty-three?
Twenty-two, right?
Twenty-two?
Yeah. Twenty-third. Yeah, twenty, twenty-three.
Yeah, so, it just, just last October, it passed at town meeting, so.
Just legally, you have to go out of civil service the same way you came in, and it was a commenting vote, and it's all by ballot.
Okay.
So, everybody can go to the legislature, but, um, there's a whole bunch of them pending right now in, in the legislature. So, there's a lot of people getting out of civil service, we'll do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
All right, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Mr. Smith.
Should we just show on the road?
We should, we absolutely should, with Lauren, right?
So, are you going to?
Did you, did you have enough time to read through?
I did, uh, just for everyone's amusement, there I was reading this exceptionally long statute, but the answer was in the first paragraph.
Oh.
So, teaches you a, a good lesson. Uh, what it says is that the, the board can opt out of early voting, provided that it holds a public hearing and acts prior to forty-five days, uh, before the date of the election. So, um, yeah, I wanted to make sure that, that that was the right number. So, um, if you wanted to hold it on June, on July thirteenth, you wouldn't be a, able to opt out of early voting.
You wouldn't be able to opt out.
Correct.
It's not forty-five days.
Right, yeah, and you'd have to have a public hearing.
Yeah, definitely, yeah.
Um, yeah, and a public hearing requirement, Mr. Chair, uh, there's no special publication of any, any sort, so it doesn't have to be published in a newspaper or anything like that. It just has to go in an agenda, which says, you know, public hearing, right, you know, opt out, vote, um, of early voting by mail.
Okay, all right, well, anyways, that would have to be forty-five days from now, and if we set it for forty-five days from now, I'm pretty sure we'd all get beat up on the way out, so.
Sorry, Lucia, I'll help you, this is something. All right, so, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Smith.
I will make a motion to set the town special election date for Saturday, July thirteenth, twenty twenty-four.
From me.
From.
Was it eight to five?
Eight to five, right? That was, the town election was eight to five, so I think that makes sense, okay.
I'll second.
All right, motion is second to set the town election for July thirteenth from eight to five. Um, any further discussion? Okay, Alec.
Remember you, if you're still there.
He's trying to hold in. All right, let's go to Denise, Denise first.
Ah, yes.
Kevin.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
I'm a yes, and Alec. Pretty sure I heard yes.
Is that daily binding?
It could be, Lauren, is it okay?
Maybe what you hear is stuck in space with cake.
Let me just check, you might have.
The time that he said.
Uh, yeah, he had to run.
All right.
Okay, yeah, he had to run.
Okay, I mean, we.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, we have four votes, so.
Four votes, yeah, yeah.
Um, yeah, and he would still be allowing, Mr. Chair, to sign the election warrant if he wants to, so there's.
I'm sure he will, yeah, yeah. I, I don't wanna speak for him, but I'm pretty sure he would have said yes, so. So, four and a half to nothing.
Let's, all right, let's, we're gonna keep going, I'm gonna try to nail this.
So, now we're gonna do the ballot portion of it, right?
Yeah, so, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Smith.
Um, um, I would like to, I would like to make a motion to, um, approve the ballot question, um, for the additional four million and six and a half million in real estate, personal property taxes, for funding the fiscal year twenty twenty-five operating budgets for the town and public schools for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-four. That language for the ballots, um, for the special election on July thirteenth.
As written.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor? I'll look into that. Uh, Alec. Denise.
Yes.
Kevin.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Smith.
I would also like to move to, um, include on the ballot for the July thirteenth election, the language, um, as written for the revocation of the civil, uh, fire department or the civil service law for oppositions in the fire department, um, and including the explanatory language, um, if required, if, um, allowed by law.
Okay.
How'd I do?
That's good.
Okay.
Is that good, Lauren? Thank you.
Quick clarification question. Uh, this is question one A, one B, this says question one.
Oh.
Is it just, should we say call it question two?
Yeah. Second.
All right, motion is second. Alec, Denise.
Yes.
Kevin.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
And I'm a yes, okay. Excellent, thank you, guys. So, now we're going back to our agenda here. That is all said. Make sure you've got some of those. Pledge of Allegiance? No? Thank you, Lauren.
Thank you.
And Alec can probably sign up, too, if you. So, now we have appointments, resignations, we have a appointment of Jared Ferraro to Traffic Safety, Traffic's, Traffic Safety Committee, that's, that's wrong, it's a study, Traffic Safety.
It's a, it's up for debate.
Do we need to make a motion for that?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Murphy.
I make a motion that we appoint Jared Ferraro to the Traffic Study Safety.
Go safety.
I created it, it's Traffic Safety, I know what it is. All right, is there a second?
Second.
Let's do a second. And since Alec's on there, we're still gonna do a roll call. So, Alec, hang up. Uh, Denise.
Yes.
Kevin.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Reappointments for board committee terms expiring six-thirty, point four. We have a few.
So, the list is in front of you, uh, you can see the people that asked not to be reappointed, letters went out to everybody, and, uh, you have three of them on there, and that said they would rather not be reappointed.
I guess we, we need a motion to appoint, Mr. Murphy.
I make a motion to re, uh, reappoint everybody on the list as amended. I make a motion every, uh, reappoint everybody on the list as amended to the boards and committees that they have been appointed to.
Motion is second.
I just. If I saw it here, I think they have a separate one. That was there to the resignation, but I was.
That was in the resignation from.
Yeah, that'd be after.
Ah, second.
Motion is second. Alec. Denise.
Yes.
Kevin.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. And we have the resignation of Samantha Tambulus from the Recreation Committee.
We don't need a motion for that.
No, no, we don't.
It's an opening.
Parks and Rec openings.
All right, next, we have, we have minutes from May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Marson.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes as written of May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four.
A second.
Motion is second. Alec. Denise.
Yes.
Kevin.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. All right. Licenses and requirements, we have discussion and/or vote to approve the special events application for the Rodman Ride for Kids scheduled for Saturday, September twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four, with a rain date of Saturday, September twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-four, from eight AM to three PM. Does anyone have questions on this one?
Mr. Chair, by the look of, sorry, Mr. Chair. Um, by the look of the route, the only impact in Norton is on Bay Road from Highland Street in Easton to Town Hall.
Mr. Chair, by my house.
Go ahead.
I don't see it on to my agenda.
Oh, yep.
It's under licensing permits.
Why am I missing it? Oh, again, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Well, it seems it goes right by your house.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Snyder.
Uh, looks like the licensing board vote is not completed. Is that just on this sheet?
Oh, that's what you're gonna do today.
That's us.
Yes.
Okay. It's like, I haven't seen that before.
Place a fire already, yeah.
Yeah, place a fire.
Yeah, as soon as they're ready, send up.
Yep. All right, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Snyder.
I'll make a motion to approve the special events application for the Rodman Ride for Kids scheduled for Saturday, September twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four, with a rain date of Saturday, September twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-four, from eight AM to three PM.
A second.
Motion is second. Alec. Denise.
Yes.
Kevin.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Yes. All right. So now we're on to announcements.
So, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Marson.
We have a flyer in your packet about the Norton Veterans Council banning one up in front of the Yell School yesterday, advertising it. It's on all the electronic banners, signage around town. I, uh, it's from June nineteenth to the twenty-third in front of the Yell School. Um, the times are, uh, it goes from Wednesday to Sunday. The times are Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, five to ten, Saturday, twelve to ten, and Sunday, eleven to six. It's the same carnival company that we used last year for the Veterans Council. Um, it's going to be a car show on Sunday. If anybody has a car that they'd like to enter, there's no admission fee and there's no pre-registration. You can just shoot me an email. It's on the flyer that goes with this one, or you can just show up. Um, we're giving trophies for best cars. Um, we're also, as a bonus, on Saturday, we're gonna be having a dump tank, and we're looking for volunteers to take part in that as a fundraiser for the Veterans Council to help all veterans in town. So anybody who's looking to, um, dunk somebody or a friend of yours, or no, I can tell you that I will certainly be taking my turn into dump tank. So we'll free you stop by.
Rumor has it that half the town wants to dunk me, the other half wants to dunk Kevin. So I think, I think we should both volunteer for.
Well, I think what we should do is, I think we should nominate the town manager and tip her.
Oh, there we go. I would second that.
So anyways, I just, uh, it's really, it was a great turnout last year, um, so we're hoping for another great turnout this year.
It, it's, it's a great cause, and I will definitely, I'll, I'll help out with that. You guys can dunk me, I don't care.
So that'll be on Saturday.
Just a quick question. Uh, did you mention the volunteers, like, who should they seek? How many volunteers are you looking for?
So if anybody is looking to volunteer, or if there's any students who are looking to give volunteer hours, we have opportunities, um, to help adults with, to help sell tickets and, um, to help with cleanup and to help with general organization is what we're calling it. Um, so anybody who's looking to volunteer can contact myself as well, and I can help you out with that.
Okay.
And we never have too many volunteers.
That's great. All right.
Thanks, Ron.
Okay, next we have, um, okay, we did the vote, so we have to review and discuss and or vote to award the DPW Supply contract.
Chair.
Town meeting.
So this contract is through the Southeastern Regional Services Group, and you have the items in your packet that we are proud of. Most of these items did increase. There were two that decreased, uh, one and a half in stone, and actually the mid-grade unleaded gasoline, um, went from last year, last year it was zero point one one nine five, and this year it's zero point zero six eight two for the bid increment. So, um, it's pretty good drop.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, Mr. Snyder.
Um, Mike, is this, um, the prices on here, are, is this the Norton cost only?
This is for all, like, the different regions. So, like, you see, sand, wash, sand and gravel, Eastern Fox, seven, thirty-eight thousand seven seven nine, that's all three towns. And then the ones above that are any, all the towns.
So that's, so for that one that's Eastern Fox or Norton, is that just divided by three?
No.
Is there, or is there like a formula?
Yeah, each town sends in what they think they're gonna use.
Okay.
Are you required to pay if you don't use it?
No.
There's notes in the requirements contract.
It's just, it's just their best estimates of the contract it can bid on.
Gotcha. Okay.
Any questions? And Sean, a motion to approve. Or to, to award, to award and to allow the town manager to sign, right?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we award and allow the town manager to sign the Southeastern Regional Services Group DPW Supply Award.
For the period of July.
For July twenty-twenty-four through June thirty, twenty-twenty-five.
A second.
All right, motion is second. Alec. Denise.
Second.
Kevin.
Yes.
I find that so funny every time.
I, I do, right?
Yes.
All right, Roger.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, next up, we have review and discuss and or vote on, to award the water and sewer treatment chemical contract for seven one twenty-four to six thirty twenty-five.
Um, so these items all dropped, which, uh, just to give an example, the potassium hydroxide last year was five dollars and twenty-two cents per gallon. This year it's four dollars and thirty-seven cents per gallon. Uh, the sodium hypochlorite was a hundred and forty-three dollars and twenty-one cents per drum last year. This year it's a hundred and forty dollars and thirty-five cents. And the sodium hypochlorite, um, two thousand seven hundred two point, two point seven six three oh per gallon last year, two dollars and thirty-five cents per gallon this year. So those all dropped.
Motion is second.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Snyder.
I would like to make a motion to award the water and sewer treatment chemical contract for seven one twenty twenty-four to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, um, and authorize the town manager to sign.
Okay.
A second.
Motion is second. Alec. Denise.
Yes.
Kevin.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. It's like the Bueller, Bueller. Okay.
I found the one that Alec signed, so if he does, he'll sign that one, we'll be upset.
That's a simple one, okay. All right, uh, next up is discussion of the procedure for the town manager's evaluation. Um, I wanna put this on here. Uh, last year we did it late the year before that. Don't even remember doing it. Um, so I know we're still a couple months behind on this, so, um, I will be sending out the evaluation forms to everybody individually. So much, Kevin put these together last year, and I think he did a great job, so we're gonna use probably the same forms. And I'll send them out to everybody, get them back to me. I'll compile, compile them, and we can discuss it at, at our next meeting that we had this on the agenda, which will probably be this next meeting.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Snyder.
As much as I'd like to take credit for those forms, I think the previous board had actually.
Did they?
Put them together and I stole them.
Did I give them credit too?
Yeah.
You copied them much better.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I don't know, you kind of made it seem you managed yourself. No, we'll, we'll thank you to the previous board as well, because they, I think it's, I think it's great.
That's great.
Okay, no other topics, uh, recently anticipated, so. On to all business. We have, uh, the janitor services contract.
We do. I gave you a, a list of, uh, all the bidders. We actually had nine bidders, which was good. I don't know what, um, bidder number eight was thinking. We could just buy all new carpet for the price that they gave us instead of cleaning carpets.
Yeah. I think that's the, I don't wanna do a price.
So anyways, uh, I recommend that we award the contract for the low bidder, um, MC Cleaning, who is currently doing the service.
Okay, any questions for the board?
So they know that this is for the new town hall and the new senior center, right?
They do. Yeah, they, it was delay.
All right, so I'll confirm motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Marson.
I make a motion that we award the janitorial services for the period of July first, twenty twenty-four to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, to MC Cleaning.
Second.
All right, motion is second. Uh, Alec. Denise.
I said the question.
Oh, good.
Uh, with the one percent budget, is this all accounted for?
Um, I'll have to review and see. It should be, because we did, uh, when we did the budget, we put in for, knowing what the building, buildings were gonna be. We actually asked MC Cleaning, um, six, uh, probably more than that, uh, like a year ago, based on the square footage, to give us an idea of what the cost would be, so.
So if it's not, I'm just one percent, and if the other two overrides fail, what is the, what is the, what are we gonna do?
Uh, we, we can get out of the contract at any time. We'll structure it that way, um, but we need to do the cleaning, so, um, I would hope that we would have to make an adjustment to the budget in the fall if overrides any pass.
Okay, Denise?
I motion to approve.
No, there are. There are usually motions.
Second, we're on.
Oh, sorry, yes.
Making it easier. Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Did you ask Alec?
I did. I asked Alec first.
You did.
I did. All right. Now, town manager report.
First thing on there, I wanted to request again, um, as we've done in the past, July fourth, it's on a Thursday, and in the past, what we've done when it falls on a Thursday, where we only work a half day on Friday, if all the employees in the town hall are work, willing to use their own time, um, to close town hall for that day.
Yeah, I think we did it last time. I'm kind of with it. Once we did a motion for that.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Snyder.
I make a motion to, um, close the town departments on Friday, July fifth, twenty twenty-four. Second.
Okay, Alec. Denise.
Yes.
Kevin.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Um, the second thing, I just wanted to let everyone know that, uh, the assessors, they've started their cyclical inspections. So there will be, um, a woman going around town to properties. So they've said, uh, the woman's name is Nancy Cole, um, she's driving a twenty twenty-one Subaru Outback dark gray with registration nine seven six dash JK three. So, um, they've alerted the police department and, um, just wanted to make the residents aware that if they see someone coming around looking at properties, it's part of the, uh, project to reassess the properties.
Anything else, Mike?
Yep.
All right, select words reported now. Roger, you got something, right?
Uh, yes. I'd just like to, uh, take a moment to, uh, mention and thank the first responders and emergency personnel that responded to the incident on a reservoir last Monday. I'd especially like to thank and recognize the efforts of the Norton Fire Department, the Norton Police Department, and Norton Emergency Management. The work that they do in situations like this is things that nobody else wants to do, um, and I wanted to make sure that we appreciate that. This tragedy drives home the importance of water safety, especially as we head into the summer months. Our thoughts are with the family and friends of this tragic event.
Thank you, Roger.
Mr. Chair. Uh, I'd like to just, uh, take a moment of silence in, in recognition of today's D-Day for all those who gave their lives on the Navy Beach.
Absolutely. Thank you. Anything else?
Mr. Chair, yeah, and just to, um, follow up on Roger's, still, which I think was well said, um, I also wanna thank our partners and other towns that also.
Yeah.
Jumped in and other organizations. I know there was a regional dive team, I think, was involved, and, um, so, you know, sometimes we have to jump in and help other towns, and sometimes other towns have to jump in and help us, and, um, I know that that happened in this instance, so I wanna thank them as well.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you.
Um, and, oh, and then one more thing. Um, I know we, we were emailed by someone regarding reservoir safety, and I think we're gonna try to talk about that at the next select meeting.
Yes, yeah, I'm gonna bring it up the next meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yep. All right, um, so I approve the warrants as written, and we, oh, what's the, is there wording?
Yes.
The executive session? I don't have it.
Last one.
Last, there you go. That's the last page. Okay, two in motion, two, no, we're not in motion, I should say this. All right, I declare under General Laws, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one A two, that the purpose of the executive session will be to discuss strategy with respect to negotiations with non-union personnel, i.e. town manager, because a discussion of this strategy in open session could compromise the purpose of the executive session, and with the board not to return to open session at the conclusion of the executive session.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Snyder.
I move that the board go into executive session under GL, Chapter thirty-A, Section twenty-one A two, for the purposes and reasons declared by the chair, and with the board not to return to open session thereafter. Second.
Okay, Alec. Denise.
Yes.
Kevin.
Yes.
Roger.